You're unmuted. Welcome, everyone, to the zoning board of adjustments of June 15th for the town of Barrington. I will open with the call to order and a roll call beginning with Mrs. Huckins. And Andre, one more time on your last name, please, sir.
LaPrada.
LaPrada.
Yeah.
And Paul Tivito present.
George Bailey.
Vice Chair Bailey present and Tracy Hardikoff Chairperson present. Our continued action item from our May 18th meeting will be continued for another meeting pending no one objecting. Okay? And we have an action item in front. Oh, I'm sorry, George. Would you? Yes. Could we do the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you all.
I'll make a comment about that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Should anyone ever choose not to participate, that's certain. Before us is action item 115-11 GR22 ZBA variance. And we have BLAR, guilty trust, George and Sarah Grumbos. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Welcome.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm gonna put you on pause for one quick moment. For the continuance of case 12130 GR22, could I have a motion to begin that? And a second, please. Okay, a continuance to the meeting of July 20th. Is that your motion?
That's my motion, Madam Chair.
And a second still by Huckins?
Second, yes.
Yep. And roll call vote beginning with Mrs. Huckins.
Aye.
Mr. Tivito?
Aye.
Clearly aye.
Is the, thank you, pardon, but is the alternate participating tonight?
I think we're gonna.
Yes, so you need to make a statement to that effect so that he is on the board because we make it a five member.
Andre, comfortable if we appoint you from an alternate to a regular voting position tonight?
You dare.
If we did, okay. And I would make that motion. If I have a second.
Second.
And roll call vote beginning with Mrs. Huckins, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. You can abstain, Andre, or you can now participate.
I'll abstain.
Just, gotcha. I'm not sure if that's what I will say, but I will check that.
On what? Just for, it'd be just for tonight.
Continuing on with action item 5-11, guilty to present.
I did submit a PDF. I don't know if it's on this computer or if I should just.
Did you send it?
It was sent a while ago. I reset it today. I do have it on my jump. Yeah, I think I did share.
Another one that had the exit, the driveway part.
I got it open up here.
Is that you? Do you mind if I just click on it? Is that it? Is it showing up there?
Files not all.
Getting closer.
Oh, there it is.
Am I just be delayed? Is the plan up?
Fuzz there.
Fuzz there, it's gone.
What do you mean?
Ruffling. It's a 11 by 17 plan that's in color.
Do have large set, large plans too.
Is that, is that a set for us, sir?
Yeah, it's that same stuff we submitted.
Okay. It's this one. If you kind of, it's in color, it has green, it has two, shows the two different, it's probably at the very back of your packet.
What's the number? One of one?
Oh, there you go. Thank you.
She one of one.
That'd be easier to see.
How you doing, man? So this isn't up?
He submitted on an original packet and made sense.
Good evening, Frank Saltins with Dwayne Builders. They're representing Robert Grumbos for 55 cottage lane, tax map 115, lot 11. The application that we submitted, the full company's item, the application plan that's in front of you, which shows left side existing conditions, and on the right side is a proposed conditions. And architectural plans, photos. A cottage lane maintenance signed by Mr. Grumbos, a letter of authorization to still wagons to allow Mr. Grumbos to upgrade Cottage Lane. As Cottage Lane is, was historically entirely on still wagon, still wagons property. We also submitted a cost estimate from KJ Fisher &amp; Sons on, on the upgrades. And then we submitted on the final sheet of the application was a plan that was recorded for Robert Lindsay that originally created the location of Cottage Lane and the right of way. It notes the right of way for Cottage Lane to access this lot. So this lot, along with two, one other, two other houses and one other vacant lot uses Cottage Lane, they're all against the lake and it comes off Young Road. The lot we're talking about is 0.36 acres, it's kind of a, where the house is and then it has a little tail that goes to the south. Apparently the two bedroom house on the site, New Hampshire DPS septic system that was installed back in mid 2000, 2004, 5. And there's just one other structure on site, which is a small shed. So what we're proposing, which is the right side of that plan, as you look at it, it's in the blue, is the proposed addition. It's mainly first floor would be a garage and then above that is living space. The reason for this is Mr. Grumbos is moving here full time. He lives in Salem. He bought this last year and he has medical reasons that he needs to have a garage for his needs and access to the house. It's more ADA compliant than it currently. So we're adding the two bedroom, two car garage with living space above it. In addition to that, there's a bunch of improvements that he's proposing along Cottage Lane. As you look at, start with the green, the green is expanded or fairly bringing back to what Cottage Lane used to be at one point and making it wide enough for fire access and emergency access. The narrowest part of the road right now, driveway is 12 feet, we're expanding it to at the narrowest. And then as you get to the bottom of the plan, more southerly part of the driveway, it's actually gets as wide as almost 28 feet and we're expanding that as well. Then at the end of Cottage Lane, we're kind of squaring it off for, be it for emergency and fire access in case they have to get down there, they can turn around. Right now, it's kind of a, it's not squared off and be difficult for a vehicle to turn around. I believe Dwayne has reviewed this with the chief, Chief Walker.
That exceeded the parts for the road. We actually on that and it was 31, plenty to turn around any of the public safety vehicles. They've had public safety vehicles protected currently a couple of times, but spans it beyond that. Can get two side by side.
So in addition to expanding, I, that's still wagons and then just left, we're gonna expand into the natural gravel road. The reason that large tree we show that because it is, it's a very large five, six foot diameter tree. And the cost of taking that down, it would be more, more reasonable to spend it on upgrading the road than it is to take down that, that large tree. There's two small trees to come down, which is in the estimate that we provided. The impacts, which doesn't really matter to this board, but because we have submitted a shoreline permit, there's 1,511 square feet on the, on the east, on the west side of Cottage Lane and only 165 square feet of impact on the right side of Cottage Lane to upgrade it. So what we're here tonight for is a variance from Article 411, table 1, standard. As you see, we put the dimensions in red from the blue addition to the property line and we assume because that's Cottage Lane, that that's the front setback. So we're associating that with a 40 foot setback. We're asking for a variance to 13.7 on the southerly corner and 19.1 on the northerly corner of the garage. We meet the setbacks for the north and south boundary lines. So it's that, that front, front setback that we're asking a variance from to put this two car garage in. There is access that the vehicle will go into the garage. In addition to that, there is a gravel area between the proposed garage and the existing shed where a vehicle can park as well. So Cottage Lane would stay, stay open and accessed all the time. And I think that's everything on the plan. I open it for questions or criteria.
John, that 13, Madam Chair, before he starts reading.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're saying, John, the 13 seven would increase by going to the center of the road? Will you measure?
No, not to the center. But it is, it's the edge of the right of way by a definite. And if you look at it, it's hard to have. All the lines coming across.
It actually is.
Excuse me, sir.
Completely on.
Point of order.
Or originally was granted. But they, that they don't, there's no.
So we.
Right away.
Mrs. Huckins, do you have questions?
I would be helpful. We have a street like this, we have a property that's a car. I'd like to see all of Cottage Lane, you know what I mean? It'd be nice to see to the end and.
Any additional homes outside? Yeah, I have.
I'm looking, I'm thinking, well, Cottage Lane, it likely never be elongated, never be added.
Yes.
If possible for this to be done because of how the property.
One house after. Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. Do we have a permit for the deck? Was the deck put on after the existing house? It was permitted? That's all I need to hear, sir. That was one of my questions. Second one is where is the well and where is the septic system on your drawing?
We did.
This is the new one you just submitted, sir.
Right. I didn't show the well and septic on this. We, we did locate it.
Madam, I would ask for a continuance.
Oh, it's with you.
Yep. Do we have that on?
And could someone help us? I also looked for.
You look at, on the map on the.
We do have another, they're not the town plan, they're just, that's what the plane has.
Yep.
Those. I also have a copy of the approved septic system.
Is my copy, copy for file? They, they do this to me every time. They bring them in and they make it so small, I can't say it. Well, if it, it's not on the, on this plan here, so we can't, I just can't accept the smaller ones that's not on here.
The small one filed with the application.
No. Smaller version is here, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Smaller version is here, the full size of this one here.
Right, but it was not filed with the application.
No, it was not, didn't, not come with the application.
File plans with the application. These are just upgraded because the improvement's upgraded.
This, this is the original one you filed, sir. And on this original one, it does not show with the septic or the well, sir. I'm not trying to be difficult.
Oh, that was an oversight on my.
Over the years, this board has got it stuck to itself. People have put it to us because they didn't have the well or the septic in it and it didn't quite make, because we approved it, tough situation, you know? And so that's why we've been very strict, or I have been.
I, I do have a copy of the approved septic system that's on file with the town. I know it's not on this.
I did give you a continuance. I requested the continuance for that.
Have a point here to show where the well and septic are. So why would we consider it based on that?
But that was not submitted with the package. It was an afterthought to come here because we just got a new, new statement that this here is an updated drawing. But you, but you just got a smaller one. It's not on the plan that they want us to use. It's an incomplete set. And you know from past experience, and I've said to everyone here, we need to have everything on the map. And if you go back further, you know that Cheryl, that even when, I can't even remember her name, Ms. Forbes was here. It's always the same thing, a complete drawing to start with and it's not on here.
So I, what's the motion George has made in mind and let's continue information gathering, okay? Unless I have a second. So I have, I'm gonna ask one or two questions if I start.
Okay.
Do we have, it looks like one of the trees being removed is on Buddy neighbor Gagnon's property. Do you have written permission to remove it?
No, ma'am. We have just a verbal form. She's selling the property and she's.
Okay, it would, okay, it would be.
Understood.
Desperate to have that. Looks like one of the smaller trees is on that property and the person that was in support, and you have a written letter from, is the person who's then suggesting going to sell the property after.
Still wagons are the people to the west.
Okay.
Where the majority of.
Okay. And then I see there's a ramp coming within the garage area into the home and you mentioned American facilities act. There were ways within the home.
Question?
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I would like to ask John a question.
Clarifying question.
John, I have a clarifying question. The applicant has submitted to have the ramp inside of the garage according to drawing A100. And my question is that all the doors are there, but where is, do they have to have one for an exit? Say it's just the garage? Okay, so, so then. So, but, so, but if we're giving the, Madam Chair, if we're going to give a concession on this, then we got the ramp in the garage.
Oh, also I have two exits right here for means of egress that roll out flat onto the deck area.
Deck show stairs.
Are you correct?
That's what my question is here. As I know before, when I asked that question, I was told it's up to you and that's why I asked first. Thank you, John.
Question, looking at your plan, your drawing. Nice job, by the way, whoever drew these up. The access to the second floor. It's two, two sets of stairs here, one?
It's one set of stairs.
One set of stairs, the winding stairs.
Yes, they're gonna put in a, one of those.
The chair, chair.
A chair lift? Okay.
Well, you're gonna have a regular Disney. I'm not being smart. I'm sorry. I shouldn't have said that.
Any other questions concerned?
I, I, I will tell you, Madam Chair, I have concerns about the distance setback. Do have difficulty with that setback. From the road, yeah, the way John is.
It would be most helpful, I think, if the law was for us, if we could actually.
Right of way is actually gonna be the property line. I'm sorry, I disagree with you. Because, because the right of way, as you look at the recorded plan, that's the last thing on the, on the, on the application. It's completely on the Lindsay property. It's not on the Grumbos property. So the right of way was, was granted completely on the Lindsay's property when it was created back in. That is, that is determined by this plan that was recorded back in.
Right away that's on the upper part of the right of way.
Correct. The way it's shown on this plan that was recorded for, for Robert Lindsay and says 2014 Cottage Lane is showed, shown completely except for the last bit, little bit where the driveway pulls off last lot on. Did that, the right of way. Don't set the right of way there. I can't read the right.
Did the second part of the road.
We discussed it, yes.
Right up on?
No, ma'am.
It's not in our file.
Rested.
Okay.
So on the recorded plan. Note over there.
So how can you? Using a lift, a chair lift, what stairs, that was a question I had.
Okay.
Cause I thought the same thing.
Yeah.
On all our past stuff, wherever the people at, they probably.
Still can't, you're still. Right, it's not here. Let's, let's see if we can submit it. Because it, I mean, it is clear.
So this.
You mean the butters?
Yeah. So this is the note that's on there.
Can you read it out loud if you?
Subject to rights of ways to several others.
Okay.
Well, it points to the Cottage Lane on the plan.
It's not a good one.
I mean, it's not like there's.
See, I even.
Yep. So, so a couple of issues that have been raised, the written permission to remove the tree, the written permission or acceptance or embracing of the road expansion by the authority having jurisdiction fire state. And any other questions, comments or concerns?
Complete.
The septic and well on the plans. Anything else, Huckins?
Clarity on the road.
And clarity on the road based on.
I even tore them off so I could get them going in the same direction.
Okay.
You guys understand it because you drill. You're out there.
And any.
And there's two of us that are saying.
Any other questions that you have for us?
No, I think, well, I think on the right of way, the plan clearly shows on the recorded plan where the intention of that right of way is. There's nothing in the deeds for Grumbos or the butters saying there's a right of way on their property. So, but that, that's.
So you just said there's a recorded?
Bitted with the application. Yeah, you do.
We do.
It's, it's submitted as the last page of the.
Where, where did someone find it off?
Is it this one you just handed out?
No, it wasn't one of our plans. It was actually prepared by Land Tech.
Right here.
Is this one with the?
Yes, that's it.
Is it?
In that note that was read was the note that points to Cottage Lane.
I see.
That says subject to rights of ways.
New Hampshire Land?
NH, or Lan, no, it's Land Tech that did.
Sorry, sir.
Does anyone have a blue highlighted copy?
It's that, right?
It's this one. It's that, right?
Right here.
So based on this.
Wait. And it may be the, the driveway going into that.
So based on this, based on this information, do we understand that? So as it stands right now, well, septic, tree, road. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
I.
Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I have a concern or I have a question, but it's, I, I commend you on, I went looking for a bedroom. I found a bedroom on the second floor. I didn't find anything on the first. And when I, when I looked at the staircase, uh, and this, John, you got to help me through this, is that you're going to have this chair lift that goes up through this? So it'll be able, be able to take him up with what, on a lift? Or is it just going to be one of those chairs that they use for, uh, people like myself when I get older? Turn around and just go up the stairs and around? Is that, is that going to be, it's going to be attached to the wall?
Yes, sir.
Attached to the stairwell.
I meant stairwell, part of the wall that goes up on there. All right. And so then, John, my question to you is, does that have an effect on, on the, uh, term for accessibility? Does that affect the success? Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, um, few issues before us, septic, well, tree, roadway. We have a motion for a continuance by Vice Chair Bailey. Is there a second on that?
Can I just ask a question before?
Yes.
So you're asking for a letter from the chief about the road agents or something you want us to get from the road? Not that it's a private road, but I just want to make sure we cover all our bases.
You want the road agent to weigh in?
I, 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 I think it's, we usually, when our packets come to us, we usually have police, fire, and the road agent that gives us a letter. When it comes, well, excuse me, that, that's not true. That's for. Yeah, that's classics. That's right, it is. Yeah, so, so then that.
For, for your variance, do you feel that you need?
I would like to see them. It's not for the trees either, right?
For the well.
I think we need to.
Understood, but if, if we were to grant the variance, we're not granting their permission to cut the trees. Okay, so that's out of our jurisdiction.
So we do not need, okay?
Okay.
It's not the only other thing. They have not presented a complete.
Well and septic.
Well and septic. So that's, that's why I put continuance on in the very beginning so everybody knew that.
Could we include the drawing, the plan they just gave us, which you submitted to the state for setbacks? So that's been approved?
It's in the process of.
Include that plan as part of this application now?
It is now part of the application.
Septic didn't need to be changed. It was already for the two bedrooms. It will remain the two bedroom.
Okay, so.
This was for the shoreline.
So there, it's in it.
So as I understand it.
Not. Verbal, have, they can go ahead and not.
Yeah, let's.
That's all of us?
Yeah. Cheryl?
Aye.
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 Aye.